Today's the top 24. It is 6:10 PM and we are meeting for the El Cester City Council Public Hearing on State Water Plan Amendment. We have the agenda in front of us and if you just want to go forward with your introduction of the state water plan.
So my name's Tanya Miller, I'm with Banner Associates. And what we want to go through in this public hearing is just to explain that there is a CVBG that's a Community Development Block Grant Application that the city is submitting. And so I've got some information on the project background, project need, and then the proposed improvements as well as their costs. So to go through that, this project's got multiple funding sources. So I think it's important to understand kind of the background and how we've gotten where we are today. And so originally in January 24, this would be applied for a larger project. It was a $3.7 million project to do open cut street improvements and sewer installation on Offsted Street. And then open cut sewer installation on the sewer in the alley between Offsted and Union. And then between Union and Broad in that alley as well. And then also replace the sewer in First Street from the alley east of Iowa Street back over to Offsted Street, kind of where the project started. So that's how it was scoped initially. And a funding application was submitted to the state for state revolving fund, clean water monies. And the state came back and they said that the project was too large. And usually what happens in that instance, they don't have enough grant money available for a community where the rates they feel get excessively high. So they want the community to re-sculpt the project and reduce it so that the money that is awarded is, the city is able to pay it back and they're able to match enough grant with it so that it's a feasible project. So they gave us a dollar amount to target of $1,530. So we went back and re-sculpted the project and determined if we still cleaned and lined the sewer system as was originally planned with the other one. And then did CIPP lining instead of open cuts. So just basically, you know, inserting a brand new pipe inside, using new pipe for trenchless technology. We could do that in Offsted from First to Sixth and we could do that in the alley between Offsted and Union from First to Sixth. So that's what the new project was. And that was applied for then in March of '24 to the Clean Water SRF program through the state DNR. They approved that project and granted the funding. There's a portion of that being awarded as grant and a portion as loan. Right now, the city secured a contractor to clean and televise and work out this year. And then we would go back and design and bid the CIPP improvements to get those sewers lined next summer and spring, or next spring and summer. So in the meantime, what's happened is the city's having a water distribution facility plan completed to determine what water system needs the city has and then look at funding options for those. Well, it was discovered that the water main in Offsted Street is old four-inch cast iron and is deteriorated. So when you have water and sewer in a street that need to be replaced, it's really more cost efficient to open cut it, which leads us back to a more expensive project. And so looking at options and ways to proceed, the Community Development Block Grant Program offers up to $2 million grants for cities that qualify for lower to moderate income. El Cester's one of those communities. You know, we don't know what the grant amount will be, but that was seen as a good option to fund the improvements. And so we've kind of re-sculpted the project and it's gotten bigger. And so the project would now be water and sewer replacement in Offsted from First to Sixth. And then it would be CIPP lining of the sewer in the alleys in between you, or between Offsted and Union as well as between Union and Broad. There's no water main there, so it doesn't make sense to dig it up if we can line it and that's more cost effective, so that's what's planned. And then the cleaning and televising. And so with that, we've kind of reserved or put the caveat in all the funding options that if the city would find a different section of sewer in town that is in worse shape, that needs attention, we could re-sculpt the project and go look at that area, just so that we make sure the city's targeting the money towards the worsted area. So that's the re-sculpt project. With that kind of open cut added and trying to get the scope increased to include the additional segment in the alley, that brings the total project cost up to $3,990,000. And so kind of if you look at the last page of the handout, there's a table at the top that breaks out all those costs. And kind of, you know, which street, if it's for water or sewer, each section is. So on the bottom, we take that $3,990,000 cost and then there's also a CECAG Funding Administration Fee of $20,000. That's just for them to, that's if you get the grant.
If you don't get the grant, we'll charge you that.
It's good to know, but to administer the grants and just a lot of the other things associated with the project cost. So the total project cost is really $4,010,000. If you subtract the $1,530 that's been awarded through the Clean Water Program already, those funds could be rolled into this and matched with the re-sculpt project. The remaining cost is $2,480,000. Now that's above the potential grant amount of $2,020,000. So there's a remaining $460,000 that would either be funded with city funds or we could re-apply through the drinking water program January 1 after you find out the clean water amount and apply for that funding. So the thought is right now to apply for that full $2,020,000. We have no idea what you receive. You might receive $500,000, you might receive $2,020,000, anywhere in between there. If you receive less, what we can do is we can go back and re-sculpt the project and maybe that additional alley lining is pulled out. Or, you know, maybe we pull up both alleys and just do Offsted and focus on getting that done. And so I think what this does is it gives the city a lot of options. There's a potential to get a lot of work done possibly, but at least you're trying to secure the maximum grant amount possible to get, you know, the portions of water and sewer that are the priority for the city to get that work completed. So, and there's a map attached here too. The red, kind of the red highlighted portion shows where that water and sewer is located in Offsted where that replacement would occur. The purple lines are the sewers in the alleys that would be CIPP lined. So, and there's no water main in those alleys. Or if there is, it's very small diameter that would likely be upsized and/or relocated. So the rest of the sewer is shown in green on this map, so kind of in a lighter background. So that kind of explains the basics of the project and how it's gotten here. I know Harley's got some additional information for by the way.
Yes, yeah, so on the CDVG side, we did apply for this funding back in April. And it wasn't awarded because from the looks of the app, it looked like DNR, when they de-scoped it, it was fully funded. So then they didn't award any additional funding for that. So since, you know, there's just, with the original scope of $3.7 million plus on the drink, your drinking water side of things being 3.9, we're going to try for the $2 million again to submit it. So we submit the app with a total of, what, $2.4 million, or $2.4 million? And then, yeah, so try to get hopefully $2 million, but again, it's, you know, depends on GOED. So the CDVG project works to ensure also decent affordable housing, to provide services to the most vulnerable in the communities. And then it creates jobs through expansion and retention of businesses. So CDVG is an important tool for helping local businesses tackle serious challenges facing their community. So the city of El Cester does qualify for CDVG because you guys are about 51.25% of your residents are determined low to moderate income based off the US Department of HUD, so Housing and Urban Development and the US Census. So the CDVG funding also requires like opportunity for citizens of the community to engage and participate in the planning and the implementation of CDVG-funded activities in their community. So we know that the collective project is something. And then they're encouraged to identify priorities, which we did do at a previous public meeting. So I don't really know if this is, you know, it's just formality, I think, but I think I have to go through this again. So yeah, the city of El Cester, the Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment. This is what we put in for last year, or this past year. So if it's still the same, you know. So the Community Development and Needs for Low and Moderate Income Persons. Design locks and blocks to emphasize cost efficiency and community value, which is a new comprehensive plan. Discourage scattered like residential and commercial and industrial development. Invest in the purchase of governor's homes to give homeownership to low and moderate income families. And partner with Economic Development Corporation to improve housing development projects. So that was based on your housing study. Other community development and housing needs would be to enhance the character, identity, and historical preservation of a community. Participate in the pre-disaster mitigation plan process to identify possible activities to mitigate the loss of life and property in the event of a disaster. Improve city parks and create opportunities for citizens through funding opportunities through Game Fish and Parks Program. Maintain the appearance of El Cester's neighborhood cities and commercial districts. So those are some of the ones that you had, you know, we discussed at the other meeting. Planned or potential activities to address housing and community needs. So again, applying for a Community Development Block Grant to fund the collection system improvements project. Apply for eligible funding opportunities through South Dakota Housing Development Authority. The city of El Cester will be partnering with these, El Cester Economic Development Corporation will work to implement the findings and recommendations of the 2023 El Cester Housing Study. Continue to monitor the current water treatment facility improvements project and work to closing out that project. Those are all the things that, you know, we worked on the last time. If those are all still the same, you know, those are, you know, common activities that you want to work through. And I think we're all kind of, you're working through that with Dave, with like the park and Paul. And he was shouting to me about the housing development and stuff like that. So those are things that are kind of moving along. That's all I really had. Yeah, so I will ask about that.
Do you have any questions at all?
Um, I have a few. So I think if you, if we got the grant through CDVG, the coverage for that $460,000, it would, through the drinking water side, would push the rate up to $6. Because I think it sits at $58 right now, ish, the water rate, $58. So it might push it up to $6 if you decide to go that route. And if you get the full grant, if not, it'll probably vary.
So I don't know, right now I've heard it's closer to 65 to 70 with water and sewer rates for them to give grant. So I don't think if that $460 is applied for that, I think it's unlikely the city would get any grant through the SRF program.
It's up, it's up to the board, so it's usually a combination of law and grant. So it just depends.
They might, but it's likely to, I would say, that you'll actually be applying for more than $460. Right now, we're focused on this project. There's going to be another presentation to council and another public hearing to look at what the Phase One recommended water system improvements are. It's the tower improvements. And then there's some additional collection system work necessary to get that loop from the tower over to the older part of town and replace aging four-inch cast iron pipe. And so in talking through this, we, yesterday we had a meeting. And it seems like what makes sense at this point with not knowing how this grant's going to come through and what all funding will come through is to request to get on the state water plan application for probably about $4 million in improvements. And then, once we find out about the CBG grant application December 1, then see if we need to re-sculpt that or revise how much is requested from DNR January 1. So, and then there'd be a more in-depth, you could look more in-depth at the rate impact at that time too.
It's hard to say right now.
It is.
And with that plan, after they do the televising, will you be able to like put out a longer time span plan? Since this has been put off for so long.
Yeah.
Obviously, we can't do all the work now, but it's all going to need to be done eventually. Does that kind of help create a long-term plan? So like the city has something to work off of and kind of follow to progressively fix things.
Yep, it absolutely will. And you know, with a lot of the old, it's vitrified clay tile pipe, that's that older sewer pipe from 1939, a lot of it was installed. And once we can see what kind of condition that's in, you know, if it's, if it's not in too bad a condition, then the city can maybe even try to just, you know, dedicate so many thousand a year and have a lining contractor, like a hydro cleaner, somebody come in and do a set amount of footage each year. Boga did that and it's worked well for them. They started out doing like $50,000 to $70,000 a year and just have kind of plugged away at it. So that might be an option. The other option, or the other thing that might happen is maybe we find some really bad spots that you need to prioritize and fix. So then maybe a project would come out of that, where we try to get those areas fixed and then kind of whittle away with a couple smaller projects later on. So, but that information, like cleaning and televising, is going to be incredibly resourceful for us to understand what condition that's in and how urgent the repair needs are if the city can, you know, just take some time and plan.
Will they remove all the trees? Is that part of the cleaning, like any roots and whatnot?
Yep, they remove the roots. Sometimes there's almost like a mineral deposit on the pipe and they'll remove that. So they go through with a high-power water jet wash almost. And then they've also got tools like some chain knockers and other things that they can drag through there and clean. And so it's also a lot of times there's sediment that's sitting on the bottom of the pipe or debris. And so that'll go through and push that out too, so now you've got a clean pipe on the bottom to convey the sewer. There's a, you know, sometimes if that's a potential area of blockage or water's backed up, you can clean that out and you can restore flow and.
And they're doing how much of the city?
They're doing the, they're doing the entire city. There might be, I'm trying to remember if there's a small area PVC, but I think we're having them do the whole thing because we don't, just so the city even knows the condition of the PVC, if there's any issues with the joints up there. The cleaning workup by the PVC is probably going to be pretty minimal. Usually there's not as many issues with the, ruts getting in, it's a lot tighter. But I'm 90% sure we're doing the whole thing.
And then too, like, you know, if we put in like the app, does it get funded again? But, you know, again, this is every, every two years there's a funding round. So there's one in April and then one in October. So, you know, if, after the televising and stuff, you know, you find out more or something like that, we can always apply again for CDVG just for that. Because for us, for me, I can put this in as many times and I'm not charging the city by any means because it's under your guys' dues. So, and then that $20,000 is only if you got a grant. And then GOED pays us to do that, so.
Kendra, sorry to interrupt. You had asked about long-term plan with what we find out on this. As part of that, we do have a comprehensive plan that I've reached out to one of Harley's coworkers, Levi, to get the preliminary work done on this. It's typically like a 20 to 25-year comprehensive plan. And the things that that looks at is infrastructure assessment with transportation, water and wastewater facilities, school plans and projections, parks, open space, other public uses, neighborhood conservation with land use, infrastructure and property maintenance. Land use, growth analysis, planning and policy stuff, and then plan implementation. The last one was done in 2010, 2011, so we're due for that anyway. And since we have all of this going on, now is a good time to start working on this. So as we find out these pieces with the potential residential development in the park and everything else that we have working on, you know, we can work on this and work together with Banner, CECAG, and everybody else to, if we need to phase things in over the next 10, 20 years, we can have it all laid out for us and, you know, going forward. So it would all be in that comprehensive plan of, you know, these are the things that we've identified, you know, approximate timeline of what we would look at.
And Levi said he started working on it. He's like, if you see Dave, let me ask about it. He said, he's like, Tom, I'm working on it. So I'm like, okay.
And that would help us with budgeting, you know. We know that, you know, these years or this year, we're looking at doing this. So we would be able to look at that when we sit down for that year's budget and kind of have an idea of what we need to carve out for that.
Even if there are, or like semantics like ruts and stuff that have gone through the clay, are you still able to do the lining?
That's a great question. Sometimes yes, and sometimes no. If there's a, you know, actual holes in the pipe, you know, if they're small, sometimes you can line through them still. If they're large, no, you can't. Because basically the liner will kind of expand into the hole. So there's a couple options that you can do. And it all depends on what the repair looks like and, or what the, what the defect looks like and the damage of the sewer. Sometimes you can go in and do almost like a short liner, where you do like a small liner and kind of get that part stabilized enough that you can go through and do a full liner through it. Otherwise, probably the more common approach they have to do is, they call it a point repair. It's just basically a small dig. So you dig down to the sewer at that location, you make the repair. And then, you know, that's usually chopping the pipe off, inserting a plastic PVC pipe with two couplings, and then lining through that. If you have too many spots that need point repairs, and probably the most common reason that you need them is those joints on that vitrified clay pipe, they're usually every 10 feet and they get offset. So the pipe, instead of lining up nice, all of a sudden is more like this. And so it doesn't, it's hard for the sewer to run smooth and you're, it doesn't line well. And so that's probably a more common point repair. The other thing is on a segment, if you've got too many spots that you have to do point repairs or basically dig up and make a repair, it becomes ineffective to line. And that's what we're going to get from the televising too, is, you know, we'll be able to have gone through that, figure out how many point repairs we need. Is it still cost effective to line or are we better off to open cut? Because we're going to spend more doing point repairs and coming back and lining than to just dig it up. So that televising work is really key to this whole thing.
A question that was brought up to me with the cleaning and televising piece is for those that have, when they're doing the cleaning and televising, where the, the roots are coming, infiltrating the pipe, how far at, or what, at what point is the pipe that we're doing, the city's, and how far up does the residence go? And if there's a root ball like right at the junction and things like that?
Great question again. So with this project, a lot of times what these rehabilitation projects are also trying to do is to eliminate infiltration or reduce, I shouldn't say eliminate, because you can never totally eliminate, but reduce infiltration in the system. Because of all those joints, you can have groundwater infiltrating in, especially during storm events or especially if the roots have gotten in there and kind of made a gap, now the water can get in. And so in El Cester, the city owns the main and the services up to the right-of-way, I believe. I think that's how your ordinance reads. Usually it's in a community, it's either the resident owns it from the connection to the house or from the right-of-way of the house. That's the most common. I believe in El Cester, it's from the right-of-way to the house. So what we did when we put the cost estimates together is we also have lateral lining planned. So they'll go through and they'll clean the connections. And when they clean a connection, it'll get cleaned to where the connection is. Now, if there's a root ball just inside it, what's going to happen is after it's lined, a second contractor will come in and they will do the services. So they'll basically clean the service and then they'll insert a liner in the service up to the right-of-way. They do that, either if there's a clean out at the right-of-way, that they can get a camera down on one side and they, they come in from the sewer pipe so they can see, because it's a smaller pipe. They'll do it that way. If there's no clean out at the right-of-way, what the project cost estimate, the project includes is installing, they call it an inserted T, but it's basically, they just put a little T right over the top of the service and they open a hole in it and there's a riser that comes up. So then they can go down and get access with the camera and they can see why they're doing it to clean it and then insert that liner in the service. So we're essentially lining anything the city is responsible for to kind of tighten that up or button that up. So. Now, in the open cut portion with this project, I should go back and state, and if that would be lined, they would be open cut replacing those services to the right-of-way.
And does that whole street get tore out then, or just the side?
No, with, with, when you've got two utilities in there, first of all, that sewer's really deep. It's up to, I think, almost 20 feet deep up on the north end. So it goes up the middle. And so when you've got that there and then the water on one side, you know, if we try to.
Oh, the sewer's in the middle.
Sewer's in the middle. Yep, water's on right behind a curb. If we tried to save a chunk of pavement, you'd have like a little four-foot strip on one side. And so DNR is pretty forgiving about that. They know that that's not a good option, not a good plan. So when you've got two utilities, half of, you know, half of the asphalt's considered paid for by water and half by sewer, so.
Cool. I don't think I have any other questions?
Really good questions, really, really good questions. If you would get any fellow resident questions, you can certainly, if you can't answer them, send me an email and I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm sure we'll all offer once it's all televised and.
Yeah, once it's televised and then once we find out about the loan, also, or that, the CBG grant, those will be the two key pieces for the city to really figure out where to go for that January state water plan application.
You said the grant awards come out beginning of December? So is your plan then to start working on, for the state water plan for January 1 as, just kind of planning on as if we're not getting any of it? And then pull back if, depending on how much we get or, because that's a short time period, because I know how long it's taken us to work on.
No, the state water plan apps just need to be submitted, like it doesn't require a resolution or anything like that. It, it's more so to just get it on like their plan. So for DNR, it's just to have like a record of the projects. And then they'll make a decision in November to, you know, have it on the state water plan. And it'll stay on the state water plan for two years before it falls off. So then we can apply for state revolving loan fund by either January 1 or the other deadline.
We do January to try and get grants.
I know.
So the, the application for the drinking water to get on the state water plan is like five pages.
Okay.
It's very simple.
Gotcha.
Very, very simple. The, when you go apply for funding, we know we're going to apply for some funding. We just don't know how much. So, you know, part of the application is other things that can be filled out ahead of time. Where we can wait until we find out about the CBG grant and then finalize the dollar amount. The tougher part will probably be with the holidays, just trying to coordinate to get a city meeting after we find out and have time to kind of huddle up and talk.
Yeah, because the SRF application, the funding application will require a public hearing. So we'll need to submit a public notice with the dollar.
Sarah's going to, do we, we have to do a public hearing for the state water plan, no, the actual SRF application?
Yeah, the drinking water.
Okay. Yeah, that's going to be more of a challenge getting all that in. Because of the holidays, so.
Yeah, and again, with DNR, like when you put in for a funding application, you know, you can overestimate, you just can't underestimate. So whatever the, you know, public notice says, you know, if it ends up being, you know, this project's not even, you know, and that cost assessment's not close to that, then it can always amend it.
That makes me feel better.
Yeah.
Because that's a short timeline of.
Short timeframe. It is. We'll have all the information, we're just going to pull it together.
Do you guys have two county meetings? When is the last one, December?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
The week before Christmas.
It should work. It's just if we'll have enough information to get the notices published ahead of time.
I can work backwards.
Okay. Okay. Well, and I think Sarah was gonna...
We could change it to give it, you know, it's possible, we could change it to move it to the nineteenth, that Thursday. But that's, it's probably as late as we'd want to go.
They won't like you. They're packing to get ready to go for the weekend.
Yeah.
I think Sarah Pankinette was planning on doing a public hearing for a bigger amount earlier. Just to kind of, I don't know if that can, like, if we can overestimate high.
I mean, on a public notice, it doesn't matter as long as it's not under.
Yeah, so I think she was going to try to do it before December and just aim high. Go wait, do like the four million amount early, and then we could always pull back on the application.
Yeah, so. Four million, and then, you know, when it, when there's a final like decision, everything, you know, when you submit the application, you could just say like total requested funding is one point seven, two million.
If you want to think November, then you're looking at the fifth or the nineteenth.
Okay. Fifth or the nineteenth of November?
Or November.
On November?
Sarah?
Yeah, so we can have the public works whenever. It's just, you know, when we submit the app, as long as we have the resolution, okay, it should be fine.
I have another public hearing.
And DNR is a little bit more flexible.
Yeah.
You can submit, you know, a complete app or incomplete app. You'll just get an incompleteness letter, and then we have so long to get all the trailing dogs before they have their march meeting.
Yes, yeah, they're much more, much more lenient.
Yeah, just not the CDVG. But I'll, I'll ask Stephanie about all this, because again, we submitted this whole thing and you also. We're just doing the, checking the boxes.
Yep, so thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up to think of your thing.